...of the Hubbard Sten Planning Board. It is six thirty-seven PM on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually. Through Microsoft Teams, pursuant to Section twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members, as well as members of the public, can participate remotely. Recognizing that we do have a forum present with Mr. Steiger online, Mr. Carpenter in the room, and myself, we'll be calling our votes as roll call votes, noting for the record that we have absent Mr. DiMalia, Mr. Mr. Holman, and our associate member also provided advance notice that he was not going to be able to make it tonight. So moving forward in the agenda, do we have any anybody here for public comment, either in the room or online for something that is not on the agenda? Looks like there's no one online. So let's move forward into acceptance of minutes. So the planning board minutes have been made available to everybody, both through the SharePoint and through the the folder that's been prepared for all of the members. We typically handle these through a motion and a second, and then any corrections as a precedent amendment. So with that said, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll do it. I'll make a motion that we accept it. The items that we have on the minutes for the, and I apologize, I'm looking at the, not looking at the date now. This is for the seventh, I'm sorry, for
Second.
The second, the second of July.
Yep.
Two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second with a couple notes.
Excellent. We do have seconds, so corrections and discussion.
Yeah, there was just a couple of little things that I passed on.
I've already corrected them.
You already incorporated them?
Yep, and they're updated and
Just a misspelling in one case and just a little correction on one sentence. No meaning has changed, so in effect, I don't think there's any reason to belabor the point.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interject here for a second, but it's hard to hear when Alec is speaking. I wonder if the, is the microphone is close enough to hear?
Yep, let me move it.
Move.
Just closer to action.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Spelling of Bill's last name is not correct there.
H O M A N S, I believe so.
There's an L.
In Bill Holman's?
I guess not.
Oh, I think so. Uh-uh.
There's a
No.
Um, I have my phone on. Okay, so.
Yeah. Second.
Okay.
Yeah.
So any additional corrections?
Not from my end. Thank you so much for putting these together, yeah.
All right, and in that case, I'm going to call the vote, and it is by roll call, as described before. Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
Mr. Steiger?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, so the minutes are accepted. Moving down in the agenda, we have the Planners Report. Do you want to jump into that now, or just take it with the other items? You're on mute.
I will tackle that when we get to the continuation of William Azobro.
Okay. So moving forward, we have five A, which is Planning Board members serving on other roles. Leah, did you have a chance to sync up with Patricia and find out?
No.
Because there's, there's definitely some variance between what the Select Board thinks the case is, what we think the case is, and what emergency does.
Yes.
So, and just for the the public and for benefit of the board, so the Planning Board is essentially required to send delegates to some of the other committees and boards within the town and within the state. There's a couple of commitments to our regional planning organization, which is the commission seat for MRPC, which I am currently occupying. Then there is our representative to the MJTC, which is the Transportation Arm, and each of those also have alternative seats, which are usually filled by representatives of the Board of Selectmen. In the past, the MRPC seat, we made it available to either the clerk or somebody working in the town in order to do it as a representative of the the Select Board. These are important roles because these are organizations where we are likely to find out about grant funding opportunities. So the, really, the biggest responsibility that goes along with these roles is to listen in on these meetings, and if something comes up and it sounds like it could be an opportunity for Hubbard Sten to just be like, yeah, let's, let's take that back and talk about it. And for example, some of the projects that have been funded out of this are the DT LA projects that we've worked on and that we're currently working on, and also our our downtown revitalization project and all of that. Street work came out of a MJTC meeting where we went out and got funding for it. So although on a regular day, some of these jobs and some of these committee roles are pretty boring, as you can see from the downtown project, they can be super impactful. So I'm going to suggest that we come back to that on our next agenda. There's also a couple town boards. So the Planning Board sends a representative to the CPC.
CIPC.
CIPC, there we go. It also sends a representative to the EDC, although the EDC is not currently formulated. And the other couple committees have since been disbanded. There was ARPA, and there was an agricultural one. There was another committee, wasn't there?
There's a CPC, maybe, also that takes place usually on the fall and in the spring. I also participated in that.
Yeah, so CPC, CIPC, and these are, on those committees it is voting, it's not just ex officio.
Yep.
So some of those are pretty meaningful roles, and ultimately, in a lot of those boards and committees, the people look to the Planning Board representative as the expert in the room. So it it is important that we send somebody, just because, like I said, they look to the Planning Board representative as the expert in the room when it comes to
Yeah.
some of the zoning and long-term planning.
Can you help me with the acronym, what's CIPC?
Oh, we have
Capital Improvement Body Committee.
Council what?
Ca-
Capital?
Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
And is that, how, what area does that cover geographically? Is it just town?
That's the town.
Just the town?
Yeah.
Okay. And the EDC?
The EDC is just the town.
And what is that seen for?
Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
Now, these are all good questions.
Well, I'm a rookie here.
Yep. And then CPC is the Community Preservation Committee, right?
Community Preservation Committee. And they basically, at this very time, they they look at the CPA funding that has been collected part of, as part of the quarterly, I'm sorry, yeah, part of the quarterly taxes, the CPA funds, and then they eventually receive requests or proposals for the discretionary this year, depending again on the various different categories that they have. And then they allot the funding, depending again on whether or not it is something that can be funded based on the criteria that they have to meet. And the funding, obviously, that has to be available.
What's the frequency of these meetings? Is it variable?
It's vari-
Yeah.
It's quite variable. At least on the CIPC side, I would say that most of the meetings take place, we'd like to say, between the October to maybe February, March timeframe, and then afterwards, depending on whether or not there's a few loose items, and they end up having one more meeting. And then they happen maybe once a month, whereas a CPC meeting, I would like to say that happens, again, mostly in the fall, but goes all the way up into just before the annual town meeting, because all the proposals that come in for funding that must be approved from a CPA have to also make it into the annual town meeting to be voted.
Yeah, they're
So again, it's something I would say that's pretty, and I apologize, I think we have a little bit of over time here, Christopher.
Oh, no problem.
But it's all the way from October to, I want to say, March, April, sort of like on the far end.
Yeah, they're, they're fairly late commitments on top of the commitment that we already have.
Yeah.
The the MRPC commitment is a bit more needy, because there's a lot that goes along with that, especially if you're active on MRPC. And then the Economic Development Committee is something that gets reconstituted, that occurs once a month. But but that's
So I've been, I've been, in the last couple of years, I've been working primarily in the CPC and the CIPC town.
Okay.
I would, I would love it if somebody, I would like to take on the CIPC. It's, it's a, there's a lot of organizational matters that aren't taken care of by the town administrator. He comes in with many of the requests for funding from a capital improvement perspective from the various different, various different departments, say, for example, the DPW, Police Department, Fire Department, their own department administrative, as an example. And obviously, with the limited funds that the town has, you have to then kind of prioritize and figure out where those limited funds can be allocated. Those then will be voted on and eventually presented to the Select Board and then to the, as part of the old town meeting. And again, it's, it's a matter of, depending on how many funds there are, I would love to see somebody take that on. I've been doing it for the last five years. I mean, I can continue doing it, but I would like to see somebody else also pick up and maybe do that. I don't know if that's something of interest to you, or maybe one of our other, your vendors.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're certainly going to come back to it on our next agenda, and we'll, we'll list it with more specificity and send out more information ahead of time.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to get the conversation kicked off for tonight, because we, we owe it to the Select Board soon. But we also need to find out, because I think Patricia is still currently the alternate delegate, so.
She is too.
And Mr. Chair, I can, just make a quick note here. I did receive a notification from, I think it was the town clerk, some feature of the effect that I had already assigned to the CIPC, and I, I responded back by saying that the appointments are not done until maybe first, first month, within the first month of a new planning board being active. And so as a result of that, I could not say that I am part of the CIPC. So I think we just try to make sure that, and maybe, Leah, this is something that you may want to call up with Patricia, as well as with that, our town administrator, and that is that the notion that we are automatically assigned to some of these boards needs to be addressed, because that's not the case. That is something that the planning board makes a, you know, we, we basically discuss it, and then we assign people to it, and then, once we have made these assignments, then we can present it to the, the Select Board, okay? So this is not something that is already ready, and we can basically assume that because we did it last year, that immediately you can do it this next following year.
Yep.
Yeah, I believe the Select Board just ran with the roster from last year, so that they could go through and not overlook the seeds, so.
Right.
Well, we're certainly correct at going forward. All right, so with that, let's move on to five B. So five B is the, the zoning overlay survey, and I have quite a bit of thoughts on this, but I would rather open it to discussion for the board before I insert my thoughts. Plus, I'm going to get to pass it, these on the twenty-second, when we have the advisory group, if not before. So I don't know if, there's only seven questions here, so we can pause for a moment while everybody refreshes themselves on.
Sure.
Yeah, seven questions.
Well, I'll be hearing de novo, so you can pull me in to catch up with you.
Yeah, so this is, the, the consulting firm here is putting together a proposal for a zoning overlay district for what the colloquial referred to as the sand pits. So it's the area in north central Hubbard Sten that was formerly used as sand pits that have since fallen into disuse, but have yet to be remediated or put to use. It's also the area where it's pretty well-known for dirt biking and eighteen-year use.
This is the owner, Mitch?
Nope, that's the, the
The survey.
The firm that we, we actually received a grant, and Alec can talk about the history of the grant and what specifically the source is on it better than I can, but, but it's actually a grant for us to go through, do some of the public engagement. Alec, can you help out a little?
Yeah, absolutely. So the town in twenty twenty-four received what's called a Community Planning Grant, and the grant terms stipulate that we can hire a consultant, two hundred fifty thousand dollars plus anything additional, tap shoes if you put up, specifically to evaluate the the sand pits, as they're locally known, the purpose being to consider different alternatives for redevelopment, and specifically an overlay district. The way an overlay district working being that it gives a second set of zoning options available to the property owner. It was noted at the time that one new property owner started engaging several other property owners, purchasing up land, and has corroborated several, several acres of land, the sand pits in their entirety and many parcels surrounding it. And so they approached the town and asked that we support them and assist in coming up with a community-driven plan for how this space can best be reused. So that way, the developer, the property owner knows they're going into it with community support, they're bringing something positive to the community that people want to see done. The consultant is employed by the town and works on behalf of the town, but it's the expectation that they will engage the property owner throughout the process, including a site visit that was done over a month ago, I believe.
And this, this is completed? The survey is done?
Nope, we're, we're providing feedback on the survey to be done.
Okay.
Which is what this document, yeah.
Oh, two B, okay.
That's what this document
Well, that's what the seven part.
Yep.
So is this land a single owner now?
Yeah, there's hundreds of acres.
Hundreds of acres?
Yep.
And it's, it's got substantial frontage, right?
It has access up to sixty-eight, and it has access to Pitterville Road.
Okay. Okay.
So I don't know if you can put up this slide, page sixteen of the, that is on the script, right?
Yeah, let me put that up.
What, who is the current owner, or what's their business interest?
Is that
A developer.
That slide itself, I think, is very, very, very telling.
What type of, you have commercial, industrial, residential?
Yes.
Big?
Yeah.
All of the above?
Yeah.
Oh, very big. Okay.
Yeah, who has a history of completing projects in the state.
I'm going, Francois, the internet's a little slow.
No, that's kind of right. I was just saying, is it to that, I mean, I looked at that slide, careful of the ownership. It seems like we have ten owners in total, of which three are public, public owners, that's the state, the town of Gardner, and, I'm sorry, the city of Gardner, and the town of Hubbard Sten. And they own, I think, a total of hundred and eight, nine acres, and that represents only eighteen percent of the land. So if you multiply that just roughly by five, right, we're talking about roughly about five hundred plus acres of land.
Okay.
Can you see the screen, Francois?
Can I see your screen?
Has
Yes, I can see it.
Okay.
Do you go to page sixteen, please?
I'm trying.
Has a, has this landowner expressed his particular interest?
Yes.
A particular type of
The highest and best allowable use.
Highest and best. No, I love it. That's a very
I'm moving, I'm moving it along. It's on page sixteen, I have it right now.
Yep.
Beauty and pride, I have the
Right, so page sixteen is very clear, it is very telling. So Gardner Road, basically, is with sixty-eight. Pitterville Road, which, across the street from Gardner Road, is Morgan Road, right? So if you look at all of these parcels that we have here, I don't know, can you see my cursor moving?
No, we can't.
Okay. But anyway, I mean, all of those little wonderful colored sections on page sixteen represent, I believe, pretty much all of the ownership of a land that could potentially be impacted one way or another by, by this here. And as the states here, the state and Gardner and Hubbard Sten own a total of one hundred and nine acres, which roughly is, I mean, is eighteen percent, so let's, let's say it's roughly twenty percent. You multiply that by five, which gives you sort of like to the hundred percent, and again, I'm just using rough round numbers, and you're, you're over five hundred, you're almost about five hundred and fifty acres of land is in total for all these parcels of land together, right?
The state.
So you have the city of Gardner, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town of Hubbard Sten, and then you have a number of private owners, starting with Mark Dimick, Pheline, Gabriel Justin, Lip Energy, et cetera, all the way up to Jeff Young and Katie Young. Okay?
So the, the state in one of their surveys has identified this as one of the largest developable single tracts of land in the Commonwealth.
So what's the state's interest?
Well, the state in general is in favor of, really, of all development of what they consider to be the suburban communities, which pretty much lines up with MBT zoning. So we're not yet under the spectrum of MBT zoning, but we will be. There's going to be a station in Gardner within the next few years. There's already talk of starting the process in twenty twenty-six. The other side of it is, is with that being, it is roughly, I had misspoke in the last meeting, it's roughly about a half a mile where the entrance to the property under sixty-eight would be from the Gardner line. So it's really pretty close to the Gardner line. So that also puts it pretty close to what the state was intending with MBT zoning, although because we're a small community, that only means zoning for like ninety units of multifamily housing. But it does make it a potentially attractive target for a forty B. So part of the discussions that we've been having for a board since this issue has been flagged is that there hadn't been, there hasn't been a forty B project in Hubbard Sten yet. But when these parcels went on the market, three people came in to have informal meetings about potential forty Bs in Hubbard Sten, and this developer was not one of them. But that's something that we certainly try to be mindful of, is that this is a huge tract of land that has very good highway access. So the idea that it can be attractive for a major forty B project is not unreasonable, especially given the fact that in the period here, future, we have to zone it by multifamily , am I right, anyways, at least a portion of that. So that's, that's been kind of the framework behind it. We've been lucky, because this, this particular developer, instead of coming in and being like, yeah, I'm just going to grant a forty B, and you're not going to have any sale for anything, has been like, you know what, let's talk, let's see if we can work together, let's see what the highest and best use that'd be supported by the townspeople would be. Because as it stands right now, it's owned in our residential agricultural district, which is two-acre housing, one house per lot, and five hundred and nine acres. So if you were to just take that and just develop it under kind of the sprawl zoning that we have now, it would be a bit of an economic disaster for the town, because we would pick up two hundred and fifty houses, we would have
Two kids.
a road system that wouldn't be able to pay for itself, because then wouldn't be the density, would be losing out on a pretty big economic development opportunity, whereas the board recognized that maybe if we sit down and we talk about some mixed use, or we talk about some commercial use, we could potentially offset some of the potential tax burden that could exist if it just got residential developed.
Mixed use with a four-bedroom housing.
Yeah. Or commercial, or industrial, or office, or whatever.
Because the state wants a four-bedroom housing.
Yeah.
Got to check the boxes for every owner on this
Well, there, there is actually a special provision where a mixed-use zoning can be approved by some majority under certain circumstances. So the, the state's trying to enable those kinds of
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, that's the big picture of it. No, it's a really good question, because I think it goes a lot to what this survey is trying to accomplish, and like when, and I'll jump right into some of my comments. So like, when I look at two, and it is, what should the town prioritize as it considers development on the site, select up to three, I can tell you what's going to happen right now, based upon how we've done surveys in the past. Everybody's going to select tax revenue, the majority is going to select tax revenue and economic development, and they're going to select protection of rural character. And then there's going to be a toss-up between the others. And the problem that we run into is if we're, if we set these questions up in a way where people can select three priorities at the same time that are going to be competing priorities, what are we really going to learn from that? So like, I, I would prefer that question much more if it was like a forced ranking, or if it had a follow-up question of, well, which one do you prioritize more? Do you prioritize more tax revenue and economic development, or do you prioritize more protection of rural character? Because in, in my mind, the majority of the people in Hubbard Sten would say, I prioritize the protection of rural character. But if you go to them and you say, so what is that worth to you in annual taxes? Will you pay an extra thousand dollars in annual taxes? They'd be like, no. And if you look at towns that have really doubled down on the protection of rural character, like you look at like your Berlins and Boltons and your Lincolns and your Sudberries, that comes with a price tag. Like, you can absolutely have a protection of your rural character, and you can have the services that constituents are expecting these days, but you can't do that and not pay for it. So I would like to see us ask some questions to help us get to the, the crux of that a little bit more, and Alec, looks like you have, that's a hand, right?
Yes. Building off what you were saying, Mr. Trevor, looking at the, looking at the various options to collect up to three for that question alone, so I have a philosophy. I either, I either choose select all that apply, or my rule is no more than twenty-five percent of the total answers you're given. That forces people to really prioritize out, so for this, I would echo your sentiment. I would say we don't select more than two, or even just outright select one.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's certainly, it's certainly a challenge, because if we're, it's not like these surveys haven't been done in Hubbard Sten before, and so that's where I'm coming from when I say that I'm pretty sure people are going to respond this way, because the last three times we've run similar surveys, and we've not, we've not pushed a little bit on some of those questions, they have. I, I also become a little concerned, so I appreciate where they're trying to go with the preservation of rural character, but Alec, I don't know if there's a better practice on that, because the preservation of warp of rural character is sometimes a euphemism for potentially discriminatory behavior. So I don't know if there's a clearer way to state that. So I don't know if there's a clearer way to state that.
Um, if I, if I have to be blunt about it, I would recommend taking out protection of rural character. If someone wants to say prefer of our rural character, they can say that to the other section. Uh, but environmental protection, for example, accomplishes a similar goal. That's already in there. Um, I would say make people explicitly say, we don't want heavy development or keep developing light or I don't want to see it. Make them say what they really need, uh, in that regard.
Anybody have any other thoughts on two? Let's take these by number, since there's only seven. So going into three, the issues that I have with three is, um, and this came up when we did the, the center, the, the survey for a proposed overlay district for the town center. People have no idea what mixed use means and they also have trouble with light industrial. So if some of these things don't have, um, clearer definitions or clearer examples, I think the public really struggle with them. And one of the examples of that was, um, there was a question where it talked about mixed use and in the town overlay survey, it got terrible numbers. It got like three percent. But then there was another question that asked about like the idea of having like a cafe with like a residential space above it and everybody loved it. They thought it was great. Like, let's do that. So I think these can sometimes be challenging for the public. Like I'm not even completely sure what light industrial is. Like what does that mean? Does light industrial include lab space? Uh, does it include engineering space? What about like three D printing space? Is that light industrial? They're making stuff. Is it industrial? Like that's, that's kind of my criticism of that, that that's hard for the public to follow. So it pulls people into like a, a Mando Brod experiment. So yeah, practical examples there. Alec?
Um, Mr. Chairperson, given that feedback, it, it might be prudent to go in a different direction with question number three and question number four. An alternative approach that the town could take would be to do a visual preference survey. And that's a style of survey where rather than give people A, B, C, and D and then a sentence of text, to give them multiple pictures to choose from, and the pictures are very strategically selected because they've shown. In planning, in, in the professional planning world, we are starting to really come around to this idea that people don't necessarily care what's happening inside the space. They care more about the aesthetic design to go with the space. And so showing them different visual alternatives and asking them that question may be more effective, especially if you've gotten mixed results from limited descriptions of the past.
Yep. Yeah, I agree with that. And that, that's actually, that goes right to the example that I was talking about. That, um, there was a portion of it that asked the question as mixed use. And then there was a portion that was a visual preference. And that's what showed like the cute little bookshop with like the apartment above. And people were like, oh, that's great. I love that. Okay, it's mixed use. You hated it. Two questions. So.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. Some visuals.
Yeah.
Of other community mixed use developments.
Yeah.
Might be instructive.
Yeah, I.
Picture, pictures worth a thousand words.
Absolutely. All right. Any other comments on question three? So. And then for question four, and this is a question for Alec. Where are we at from the state level on age-restricted housing? Because, um, I thought that there was recently an advisory opinion that was not particularly warm towards any kind of age-restricted housing. Obviously, like assisted living is different, but like the idea of doing a fifty-five plus community, I thought that was pretty much dead. Or was that, you know?
The highly discriminatory practice is not dead.
Yeah. The, um, the, the description that's been given to me is that developers and property owners can still opt-in to age-restricted development. That's something they can choose to participate in, uh, where you might see an intentional fifty-five plus community. But the practice of towns requiring age restriction on deeds or rentership is, is past practice. That's not something that is encouraged and worked. I wouldn't go so far as to say I'm not familiar with any particular suits that have found it cannot be done. However, families with children have now been adopted as a protected class. And so inherently, an age-restricted community that's required by the town would be, uh, in direct conflict with a protected class. So I would say if you're looking, if you have a developer who says they're interested in it or they would like to do it, that's an accepted practice. However, you as a town can no longer put out an R and D that says, we wish to develop this much housing, but it has to be fifty-five plus. Nor do you condition a housing development to be fifty-five plus.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then the other feedback I have on four is, um, whether or not it comes as four or whether or not it comes as an additional question. It would be good to look at the idea of open space residential. Because that's something that has tested well previously, where folks in the town have supported the idea of, uh, limited higher density of done in that kind of way. But it runs into the same problem where it's like, ooh, a cluster or whatever. It's like, no, well, we're talking about, yes, higher density in a smaller area, but it makes this other area preserve. So.
I would, um, I would echo my feedback from the last question. This could be another opportunity for a visual preference survey. Uh, you show, you show a small house or a small cluster of houses surrounded by the natural space with maybe a community fire pit in the middle. That's more receptive than calling it a, uh, conservation residential development or a cluster zoning.
How do we quant, how do you quantify the impact on student populations for these different types of developments? Because the biggest quandary, of course, is the, the cost of education and the fact that it's two-thirds of the budget is unsustainable. So, um, how do you work that into this? So people understand the fact that, hey, that open space or cluster development looks great, but it creates, you know, with affordable housing, it creates, you know, more students that have to be supported on a limited budget.
Yeah. Well, there's certainly a challenge in asking that question in a way that does overload it with bias. There seems like the kind of thing we should be able to find a way to address, but.
Well, one, one of the things I was just, just noodling over was if you could say this type of development typically creates this number of students or this number of children, it creates this kind of traffic density, you know, versus this type of development? I don't know. Is that expecting too much from our population?
Well, no, I think this is where we both look at Alec and say, uh, what do you think?
Yeah, so, um, what you're describing is typically a cost benefit analysis or a community impact report that you can require at the time of submission for, say, a site plan approval or a special permit. Um, we can do a high level or you can typically do a high level analysis at a conceptual stage. So at the end of this exercise, if we then wanted to explore a cost benefit analysis, we could fund that as a second step in the process. What I'll also note is that the emerging trend here in Massachusetts, and this is going to sound inherently weird, but I've sat in on a lot of webinars for it. When you look at multifamily development, it contributes proportionately less children to the school system than single-family home style developments. And so what that means is when you put down, say, a hundred unit multifamily housing complex, that is expected to contribute the same number of children to the school system as, say, thirty single-family homes. However, it occupies less space physically, um, it's more conscientious of the environment and overall cluster services together. And so these cost benefit analyses are actually becoming a very powerful tool in helping us understand that. Uh, what I would say is if this is a known concern for the community, um, and you want to, you want to steer this exercise away from impacts to the school system, eliminating the options of single-family homes and duplex or townhouses from your survey exercise is a way to instead prioritize and engage the other types of housing that contribute proportionately less children in the school system.
Yeah, that's an interesting thought. Yeah, because really the question becomes, and, and this is actually where, where I think there's the most to figure out is what of these alternative systems are preferable? Because like if we put the survey out and it came back and it was like, oh, well, um, we should do nine hundred single-family houses, which was a proposal that was talked about at one time by one of those three developers that came in. Then, uh, then we would be like, yeah, yeah, no. So digging deeper into what the alternatives are, I think would give us information that's more actionable.
Yeah, I, I think Alec's suggestion is a good one.
All right. Any other comments on question four?
No.
So question five. Uh, if development were to occur on the site, what other features would you like to prioritize? Attractive landscaping and natural features. Cohesive architectural design that fits the surrounding area, uh, which I don't understand how that's applicable. Usable public open space, pedestrian bike friendly designs, sustainability features, preservation of existing trees and habitats, greeting buffers, public garden, cultural gardens.
I, I think that A, the option of other should also be included in here, if anything.
Yeah.
Um, it may be beneficial. So looking at option B, so I, I kind of second your, your thought there, Mr. Chairperson. The cohesive architectural design that fits the surrounding area, where this is a predominantly sandpit style of development with individual properties neighboring it. I don't know that there is an existing cohesive architectural design. That may be better broken out as option B and then option C. Option B being something like, uh, modern architectural design or, uh, period architectural design or historic architectural design as the other option.
I mean, what does period or historic mean at that point?
So typically what you would do is you would look at the, the general stock of buildings in the town of Hubbardston. So whether that's a federalist style or another style of architecture, um, and you would point back to that. Now, that's obviously a really comprehensive and precise thing. Most times when you say a type of architectural style, people don't know what that specifically is. So instead, you would say something like a historic architectural style or colonial architectural style, something that resonates. I would look to you at the planning board to, to indicate that though, you know, how you want to frame that. Um, I'm not familiar enough with your existing building stock to really, to advise you on that.
Any other comments on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so moving forward into six, it's the, um, the, the height limits. Given that it's essentially a bowl and it's not really visible from anywhere, this is not something that hangs on my radar. It would really fall for this particular area. It, it really, I guess in my mind, it's kind of a self-contained area that is ripe for being its own clean slate. It's almost like a village. It has almost the possibility of being a village within the town. But I don't know if this is a meaningful question or something else should take its place. It doesn't feel like a meaningful question to me.
Yeah, and in my opinion, if you were to ask this question, it would better be served with visual representations. Otherwise, it, it really doesn't do the site justice and it doesn't describe to the user what benefit there is in answering the question.
Yeah.
I would almost say if you're going to ask it this way, it's better served to be later on in the process.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think, yeah. Brett Swann?
I agree. Yeah.
So then question seven, which is how concerned are you about the follow-up potential impacts? I mean, this, this gets the same criticism from me as question two, which is if this was a forced ranking system, I would be all in. I think it would be a great question. But with it being how it currently is, um, it's going to draw the same thing where it's going to be, yeah, I'm concerned about, uh, environmental disruption and traffic impacts.
Right.
Demand on schools and the change in the town character and.
So how about just force ranking? You have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I think it's seven items there. Force rank them. Right?
Yeah.
Values of one to seven. One is your highest priority and seven is your lowest priority. Instead of doing not concerned, some concerned and very concerned.
Yeah, I wonder if there's any data on whether or not doing force ranking on questions impacts response rate because it's a little more work. I don't know if that's anything you see now. That might be a good question for the engineering firm if they have any data on that.
Certainly. The other question I have is, is, is there anything that we're missing here in the impact area? And so I would like to consider whether or not you want to consider maybe having a seven, you know, like a section seven B. And is there anything that you're concerned about that has not been addressed in here?
Yeah. Like.
Again, I think we're, we're basically spoon-feeding what we think are the impact areas where we're not really listening, obviously, to the town folks, what their other concerns might be that we may not be into with.
Yeah, I agree with that. And then eight's open-ended, then, um.
And that's fine.
And then for closing, do we have a project website on this?
This is, this is, you know, me sort of new looking at this. This is a lot for anyone to complete.
Yeah.
Your response rate's going to go down in the, in, in inverse relationship to the complexity.
Yeah.
So if you want a better response rate, somehow it needs to be simplified. It's just too much data.
Well, and, and that's where my question about if you did that as force ranking, would it cause the numbers to crash?
Yeah, yeah. And every one of these is, is a multi-part question. So there's maybe, I don't know, thirty or forty different options you're, you're going through? I, I, dear, I think people's eyes are going to glaze over and then you're not going to get much. much of them. That's what I'd be afraid of. Much of these things might be more appropriate once it's decided what a potential interest is in different types of development.
Yeah.
Heights of buildings, architectural designs, these are sight and view issues, right?
Yeah.
Aren't they? I mean, I'm sorry, just, maybe I'm overreacting.
Well, no, that, that's exactly the discussion we're here to have, so. It's not overreacting when you're off-line.
I think you wanna get as much response as you can, and if it turns people off, you're gonna get a very selected population that's answering. It's not gonna be those who are young and have two jobs and kids at home and can't spend, you know, in half an hour in the evening going through these things.
No, I think that's a fair criticism. So I think we have a bunch of info to bring back here. Wow, and it's an advisory committee that's doing this, so it doesn't have to come back and from the planning board for review to get sent out, which is now reaching out and me putting it on the agenda as a courtesy. Alec, your hand is up?
Yes, Mr. Chairperson, but it also occurred to me that I can share this with the advisory group meeting, I don't need to take up the agenda time here with some other questions that might be worth asking.
Okay, yeah, that, that's pretty accurate, 'cause it's, it's in the evening on a summer night, so I appreciate that. All right, so moving forward, we have old business, we have 155 Williamsville Road. There's some information in the folder here, so Alec, would you take us through these?
Yeah, so the materials put in your packet, I believe, are the same as the previous meeting, so, Miss, I'm not gonna butcher this name, we're just gonna say Rebecca. Rebecca presented to the board at the last meeting, proposal to rezone her property, the intent being to allow for, for a more agricultural, is the more agricultural friendly use type. Specifically, she and her family operate a salary cleaning business, so any kind of equestrian product has to go somewhere for cleaning, and they offer that as a service. In my opinion, it launches a bigger and broader conversation, getting towards the root of the agricultural accessory use discussion that this board has previously had. I have been given the green light by you as the team to work with Rebecca on this, and I actually have a meeting scheduled with her tomorrow. My intent being for us to conduct some case study research, so effectively pull water and septic data from her property, her customer load, her daily traffic amounts, and then to do a similar exercise for her competitor businesses, so we can put together a real snapshot of what the business looks like and what it, what it kind of brings as far as impacts. From there, we report back to this board, and then we look to find other similar use types that could be within the realm of it. And from there, the board can discuss at a later date in time whether it's true to bring, to bring back the previous zoning code that you had considered, or whether this is something more specific or more targeted, and of course, you at that time will have the, the pinpoint as the board to also say if you're no longer interested in pursuing the project.
And Alec, you have access to all the previous work on that, right?
Yes, I should. The vast majority of it should be sitting in my OneDrive, where this account was frequently used to support the board, and so I'll be doing the historic research on the previous zoning codes for most.
Okay, awesome. Any other updates on that?
Nope, I'm looking forward to working with Rebecca, and, you know, my, my big thing here, I really think the case study of the use is gonna be important. When you do even just a simple Google search, the, the stuff you find online, it makes it sound like a really tough business, but when talking with my town clerk here in Foxborough, whose, whose children ride horses, the way she describes it is very different.
Are we thinking of this as a creation of a different zone in town, and if so, if there's other properties that would, I mean, spot zoning kind of rubs me the wrong way. So I'm just curious if we think there's more than one property that's going to be appropriate for this town.
So previously, the way we looked at this, we evaluated doing changes to the zoning map. We evaluated doing a zoning overlay, and then ultimately, where we ended up was the idea of doing a, a ecotourism agricultural accessory bylaw revision. So it's an amendment, an article that sits on the bylaws and redefines agricultural accessory uses. So for properties, primary use is agricultural.
Okay.
Which actually becomes a super technical argument, because what is agricultural? Like, is it by square foot? Is it by dollar? Is it by aesthetic of the property? That actually gets pretty marked pretty fast, which is part of the problem the last time we put it forward. But if the property's use is already agricultural in nature, then it allows accessory uses.
Okay.
And to, to look what that means, like, so Rutland did this recently, and arguably, they did it way too late. Like, they did it after all of the large parcels were already gone, and after the properties were carved out. But you look at towns like Berry and some other towns, and they've done it pretty well, where if somebody has a large farm property, they get to do a bunch of other things, either by site plan review or by write, as long as they are related to the agricultural use. So that, that's essentially how the proposal came up last time.
Okay.
And where, where it went sideways is, there was this discourse that went on at the public hearings, 'cause the public hearings went on for multiple nights, and there was, got four years of public meetings going into this, not just by the planning board, but by a special subcommittee, done by the economic development committee, done by the planning board. So it got changed and it got evolved so many times, that by the time we got to the last meeting, we ruined it by having too many compromises. We should've just went with what we originally had, put it on the table, and been like, the majority of people are gonna love this, there's gonna be a small percentage of people that hate it, but that's life. Like, if two-thirds of the town approve it, then it's the law. But we got it kind of into this mode where it was like, well, we're gonna find a way to make this a win for everybody, and ultimately, by doing that, we totally broke it and asked for help. So.
Okay.
I think the lesson this time around is, kind of take what we started, have Alec take a look at it, put it up for public hearing, and thank people for their comments about the town vote on it. But that's gonna be up for the board to decide, but that's the background.
Okay.
So. Any other questions or comments on that?
No.
Any other planner report items that, that we missed or didn't get caught up by those, Alec?
Nothing more at this time?
Excellent. The red light's not on for any of the cameras, is it?
I don't see it.
That's weird.
Bridget, we're recording, right?
Oh, there's a red light. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't showing a red light on any of the cameras. All right, so moving into administrative matters, we have the MRPC membership payment.
Did you wanna talk about the Berry Planning Board letter or something?
Oh, I mean, no, I don't wanna talk about it, but it's on the agenda. So we put it on the agenda, and, so the Berry Planning Board sent out this letter, and they sent it around to other planning boards, and it didn't really have a clear mandate on whether or not they were looking us to join support, or whether it was to send another memo in relation. So we've decided, previous meeting, well, we'll put it on the next agenda, and if by the next agenda, the, the board has decided that we wanna send our own letter, we'll put one together. So I guess, the way to throw it up to the board is, we've now all had this for a few weeks. Is this something you feel passionately enough about to engage in the advocacy letter or engage in any kind of campaign on it?
Well, I actually went and looked at the draft of those house bills that Kelly Pease proposed, and I would not support them. It's, it's an intent to sort of make one size fit all, which doesn't make sense. There are proposed buffers that may be fine in Hampshire County but have no relationship to Suffolk County.
Yeah.
There is, you know, the, an exclusion of other types of battery systems. Why are lithium batteries, well, I understand their reputation, but is the concept only appropriate to apply to lithium storage systems? I don't know. I think Francois said before, there's, there's a myriad of other battery systems that are coming along, in fact, they may be superior in terms of, you know, long-term storage than lithium banks.
And we are gonna lose twenty minutes if we get Francois started on that again.
Okay, so I won't, I won't go there.
No, I, 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 I follow up on this here, and I think that I would add to, I mean, I didn't support, but Okaan is trying to achieve here. The only point I would like to make, and this is something that I did, would like to reiterate, is there are, there are beneficial technologies out there that are much less toxic, less dangerous, and we should point those out. And I don't know why they have not been pointed out to the state, and as to whether or not there is something that the state can influence those who are trying to put this massive battery energy storage system in Okaan to leverage a technology that is potentially less harmful to the town of Okaan.
So to.
I mean, I would, I would certainly, I would certainly advocate if it were Hubbardson.
So to, I guess, make sure we just have a narrow issue here, because we have plenty of stuff to work on as a board, so I wouldn't wanna put this on our project list or on our agenda to prepare a comment on this, unless it's something we really wanted to do. And I think a straw poll on this is fine, on whether or not we wanna go in and prepare a comment ourselves, debate it, and then, and then send it as the planning board. I'm not super excited about it myself, although we already have.
I'm, I'm, I understand.
I mean, if, if you felt strongly about it and you wanted to put together a, a draft comment that you think makes sense, I'm pretty sure you'd get the support of the board on it, but I don't know about just putting Alec early on's time on putting this together. We already have so much going on for a while.
Let me suggest the following, Mr. Chair, and that is, let me take a look at, I think there was like, Landford was one of the largest, like, communities that provided some support. Let me take a look at their letter and maybe modify it and come up with sort of some thendum of a paragraph that basically explains what I'm trying to say here, and that is, is, folks, let's look at an alternative here, and see whether or not the state can do something with this here. Not just simply say, yeah, we're all supportive of this, which we are, but rather also look at the other options, and maybe somebody can open that up and make a decision as to whether or not that is potentially applicable here.
I will, I will certainly put it on the agenda if you come back with something. I just.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll put something together in the next couple of weeks.
Awesome. I very much appreciate that, 'cause, especially in vacations time, like, staff time is very precious, and we got some big things going on, so.
I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate vacation time, too.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. So administrative matters, MRPC payment.
Yes.
Don't, don't we usually just, that's all, I thought that was a budgeted expense, wasn't it?
It is, it has its own line. I just wanted to get approval to pay it on the next APD.
Okay. I thought because it was a town budgeted item, we don't actually have to approve it, but.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, 'cause I, I believe we just approve things that come out of every monthly month.
Okay.
Am I correct on how that's usually done, Alec? I know you don't know from a Hubbardson standpoint, but just general town stuff standpoint.
Well, let me ask the question, is it coming out of a budget that's under the control and purview of the board?
No, it's budget from town meeting.
So if it's an annual town meeting article, then the article itself should stipulate it's able to spend funds?
It's not, it's, it's not a standalone article, it's in the budget, it's a new creative. Like, it's a line item in the annual town budget on its own.
Well, so then, if, if it's not under the control and custody of the planning board, then it can be spent at one of your administrators', at one of your administrators' purview? If it is your own article or your own budget line item, then you can also authorize annually for a member of staff to be able to expend funding up to a certain limit on your behalf?
Yeah, it's, it's on us.
Okay. I will pay it.
Nice. So matters not reasonably anticipated by chair. There aren't really any. There was a recent updated grant list from MRPC. There are some citizen planner training cooperative things coming up. I don't know if you started receiving those yet.
I saw them.
Some of them are pretty good. Some of them, but some of them are pretty good.
May I quickly, may I quickly ask, Mr. Chair, was this a list that you shared with us, was that also shared with the town administrator?
Yeah, usually send it out to the whole planning board plus plan ASC and admin.
Okay. The reason I'm bringing this up, I thought that there was an interesting item in there that could potentially be leveraged by the town administrator and some other groups, other committees within the town. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that some of the other boards and committees read it, so if you think there are some specific committees that should go after it, bringing it to their attention would be a good thing. The only folks that, that do a really great job tracking grants on their own are on the space. All right, so any, anybody else have any business to bring before the board? All right, well, somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting.
All right, do we have a second? All right, non-debatable, calling a vote, Mr. Steiger?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, we are adjourned at 7:45 PM.